Any public comments? Would any of the guests here care to speak or would you like to come in later? You'll have the opportunity to do that. I heard from some of the members of the board that will not be here, and they just wanted to have a list of questions. And I said in my emails back and forth to them that I'd read them off. So I'm just gonna read them off and Paul or whatever, you can take note of them. How long does a turf field last? What are the replacement costs? I assume much less than the original cost. What will be this bond cost to the taxpayers? What will the taxpayers do? Sorry, I can't be there. And what are the environmental impacts of an artificial field? Particularly those that involve rubber, ground up tires, whatever it is. Is that the only alternative or are there other alternatives? So I would like to at least during our conversation, talk about those. And at the end of the meeting, we want to add something to the agenda. And that is that we need to warn the annual meeting. I'll go over that at the time that we do it. Are you pointing something out to me?
ExxonMobil.
Yeah.
You're getting them in there.
Yeah, well, it's just. We need to vote to amend the agenda to approve the warning of the annual meeting. Do I have a vote?
I'll move.
Have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Very good. Okay, no public comments still? We can move on then. We have a gift from the ExxonMobil Educational Allowance. Actually, we've already signed something for that, haven't we? Okay.
Or it hasn't taken action yet, so.
Okay, as I remember, that's for the middle school or what is it?
No, it's at the high school now. And it's $500 that gets split between science and math.
Between science and math, okay. All those in favor of accepting that gift?
I'll move it.
Second?
Third?
Any discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Okay, this meeting is, the purpose of this meeting is to have a general discussion and an informational meeting about the proposed idea of having an artificial field replace the Spennelli field that we have. This discussion also includes works on the lights and the bleachers. Is that correct, Paul?
There's more to it than that.
Okay, there's more than that. But those are the original things. Now, I don't really have a schedule for the presentation.
So you're gonna get a handout right now of what price breakdown from MSK is, which is again, one view. I have copies of the full report we got back. But let me. I don't think we have enough information tonight at all for you to make a concrete decision. And you have a timeline. And this is, as you're seeing what this dollar amount that we're talking about, I have a couple of recommendations. And after we had heard back from the town clerk and our attorney about the complications of putting this together, putting it on a ballot for town meeting, we're getting urged with caution from both the town clerk and from our attorney that this should really be a separate vote and not done at town meeting day. And what I would really recommend to the board that, you know, we wanted to have this meeting tonight because we knew the report was coming back so that we could see it. But to make a decision to put, you would have to make this decision for the town clerk to get on the ballot by this Friday. And it's, this needs more extensive study. So my recommendation to this board is to be that you form an ad hoc committee. And on that committee, you have board members, you have coaches, you have maybe parents or community members. You give them a timeline that they will come back after reviewing this report in detail or maybe having the engineer come and give a presentation. And there are other presentations that may want. We may want a vendor who installs turf to come and talk to us. And then say, put a two-month timeline on this ad hoc committee that then they come back and make a full recommendation to the board. But, you know, we did not want to not hold this meeting tonight because you all knew this report was coming. And I know that we rushed it with the intent that we hoped that we could have it on the ballot for town meeting. But, you know, Director of Finance and Operation had a conversation with the town clerk who is cautioning us about doing it on the same day. And we're not confident that we have, we will have language, right language by our attorney for what a bond vote would be. And again, it's a, you know, and I've read some emails from board members at Luternum, you know, if you don't mind recording. You didn't have these numbers till now. You want more time to study it, and that's why. And I don't want, you know, I'm gonna say, I'm a supporter of the idea. So I just wanna say that out front of doing something with the field. I am not sold on artificial turf or replacing the natural turf. I'm an advocate for doing something because it is a deteriorating facility, particularly the track. And so we need to consider doing something. We need more time to study all the possibilities. And this is not putting it off. I'm in favor of studying it with a timeline with all views there and come back and make a full report.
Okay, does anybody like to make a comment on what Jim's proposal is? Amy?
Well, is there anything you can share with us? I mean, I understand your recommendation.
Yeah.
But can you share the findings of the report or what?
I can, I'm, I'd be glad to give you the full report.
It is posted online too.
Yeah, it is posted on, and there should be enough copies for everybody.
Can I get one more? Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, no, I have them, yeah.
Okay. What I'd like to do, because we are all here, I don't know who is the best versed in this information, but.
Well, Paul Danzro is the one that has been dealing with MSK. He may be the one most versed to give us, not to put you on the spot, Paul, but the one to give us the brief report of the highlights that might be in here. Because I think I'm making my intent that everybody just study this tonight and make a decision.
Yeah, no, I think that makes some sense. Paul, why don't you give us just a general overview of what the MSK has suggested? I haven't read it, so I really don't know if it's something. But the process that we would go through, the choices that have to be made, and possibly, we'll talk about money aspects next.
Okay. Ashley and myself had met, you know, MSK with engineers and architects, went over what we saw as the requirements for Spennelli Fuel Complex. And, you know, I'd be most versed if you went to the Appendix A, which I think is the seventh page of the full report, or just the subs thing that they handed out.
Yes, the one that I handed out.
Oh, yeah, okay, right.
So when you look, you know, on the left-hand side and start working down, that kind of highlights each of the key requirements that we'd be looking at within the complex. Track resurfacing, the field events in D-zone surfacing, that's part of the track on either end of the current end zones of the football field. Stormwater system upgrades, remove, replace, visitor bleacher. Parking accessible route, you know, excuse me, parking and accessible routes within the site. Currently, you don't have, you know, per code, an accessible route to get to either the visitor or the home bleacher sites or parking close, you know, to do that. Remove or replace a scoreboard. New restroom and storage building. This would be a ground-up construction with the, you know, appropriate number of facilities in both male, female restroom as well as a family, single restroom within that, as well as the same amount of storage that you currently have within the building, or excuse me, within the existing building there. Then lighting upgrades. What you're looking at is the opinion of probable costs. So this is based on looking at comparables, looking at industry standards, looking at what we could expect. And when you subtotal that out, it doesn't change no matter what field surface you end up going with as far as the playing surface.
In other words, there are things other than the ground up tires? There are other things and they're all about the same?
Well, I'm saying that's not even discussing that portion of it.
Okay.
This is all the work around the actual playing surface of the sports field.
But just so I understand, what you're telling us is that at least in their opinion, there isn't significant cost difference between the different materials you could use?
Well, not at that point yet.
He's looking at subtotal A.
He's at the top. They're going down one side and probably across the top.
So you'll see the subtotal As for all five are the same at 1.2 million?
Correct.
Yeah, I understand that.
So he hasn't gotten to anything below there yet?
So the next, so when you look below that, now we start looking into the different options you have for field playing surfaces. And you start from left to the far right, you know, the left represents if it went with a synthetic turf drainage option. Then the next one, natural turf with sand-based drainage, the natural turf with sand cap drainage, and so forth. As you look at those numbers as you go across, that's where you start seeing a little bit of variance on the pricing. And that comes then down to the subtotal B. When you add in the initial construction for both Sub A, Sub B, for all the work, that's the next sections as you go through, as well as the contingency built-in. So the total estimated construction costs, you know, for either option show up on that line. So the other factor is, when you're talking about the playing surface, the playing surface will be widened to the maximum extent possible within the current track boundaries. It'll widen out for the soccer, mainly it affects soccer playing field, so it gives them a wider field to play with. The initial design also, you know, conceptual design also grouped together some of the track items that are, you know, spread throughout all parts of Spennelli Field and kind of grouped them into, you know, better viewing areas and better event areas. And then the next portion that comes down is when you start looking at lifecycle costs, if you start looking at a 20-year lifecycle. Now, a key aspect on this is most synthetic turf companies will predict a 10-year playing surface. Now, that's what the companies initially come out and predict, however, with proper maintenance and care of your fields, like Rutland is currently on, I believe, their 13th or 14th year and plan to replace their synthetic turf next summer. Last I talked to my counterpart. All right, so when I say that, so when you look at that disposal and resurfacing calculation, that is based on it was done two times in a 20-year life cycle. However, that, so that cost might have a variance as you go through. But then when you look down, the total estimate construction lifecycle costs, that's where those totals come in.
Are peers, are synthetic, natural, what are kids playing on when they go play at other facilities?
More and more on synthetic turf.
Well, is this natural turf? Is this nat, when it says natural turf, is that?
It's grass.
Oh, that's grass?
Grass.
So all the, there's only one quote here that's the artificial synthetic. All the rest are, the other core are grass surfaces.
Okay, that's where we. But basically impacting what is done to prep the surface. When they say using natural soils first, bringing in a sand base, that you see the cost goes up. Natural is what's in the ground right there now, you know, and that's why the price is so much lower. And again, this points out why this, with only one option for synthetic, you know, you need a more in-depth study than what this is done.
Wouldn't we take it, I mean, do you take it out to bid, like?
Well, we've, well, the next, if, the next step would be like engineering, actual design, which I think is, there's a cost in here. Engineering design and permitting is $50,000. So that would be your next step if you wanted to do it. And you may get more artist renderings of what this project may look like than what we have here to give you a better view. But you also, this is, you know, one engineering firm that did it. You also could go and meet with, have vendors come in who put in artificial turf.
Right.
And come and make a presentation for this ad hoc committee that will look and study it more in depth than just, you know, this here. And there's so many, there's so many different options and then to try and decide what you, and then, you know, then you start to look and see what the impact of these options are and what a bond would cost and what those bond parents, I mean, it's, it's a lot to decide by Friday.
Yeah, I wanna, yeah, I just have a question, yeah. I understand. But I wanna understand, who are the partners in this with us? Is it the engineering firm and the turf manufacturer and the turf installer?
It wouldn't necessarily be this engineering firm. You'd go out for bid from, with this information, you'd go out for bid for who would be your engineer, maybe a project manager, and that could be somebody, you know, they, they, because they're intimately familiar with this, they may win that, they may be the lower bid, but.
Is there a possibility that the installer of the artificial turf would be the engineer as well?
Not for all the stuff, not for the project, not for the track, not, yeah.
But it could be a manager of two people. One would be an engineer for the lighting and the track and everything else, and the other would be for the installation of the, I mean, those are.
I mean, yeah, when you, when you, if you wanna put it in terms, ideally, you would like to put out the bid with one overall project manager, put out the bids for each component of it.
Yeah, yeah, I see.
And get that back in. But you, you know, ideally, you know, if you keep it under one, that would, that would make sure the entire thing is synchronized effectively. So you're not having one company get ahead of the other and then doing double work or.
How long does a project like this take?
We have not got to the timeline estimates for construction.
But that was a question that I had when I met with Paul because of the impact of, you know, where will sports teams be playing during the scope of this project. But, you know, could it be completed, I hope that it could be completed during the summertime, but, you know, we're not ready to.
We don't have construction timeline yet.
Yeah.
Paul, are there a number of firms that do this sort of thing to put in the artificial turf?
There's different companies, multiple ones.
Plenty, I mean, if you take a look at the different schools that have put them in, we could use them as resources, couldn't we?
The going rate is about 1.2 million for synthetic field, just for a playing surface field.
Just for the playing surface alone, okay.
That's about, seems to be the industry going rate.
And then in the drainage.
And then on top of that, there would be the drainage and blah, blah, blah.
Right, that's, not on top, I think it's included.
Well, just on the playing surface, but then, yeah. But everything in subtotal A was still need to be done as well.
If you touched nothing else on, you did not do any work with the bleachers, bathrooms, the track, you just said you wanna take up the playing surface and do the prep work and put artificial surface on there. You're, what, that's what he's saying, you're looking at 1.2 million?
Or.
Or.
Yeah, probably one, I mean, put in the engineering design, so, but then.
How do you, how do we, what do we go to the voters with this 4.8 million? I mean, I know this isn't what we're, we're not talking about specific right now, but how do you bond for that or how do you finance the lifecycle costs?
Do you have that sheet in the, was that part of this?
I don't know. We could, we could plan for the recycle, or the recycle, the replacement, yeah, the resurfacing replacement cost. So it's really gonna be the initial outlay.
Yeah, so replacement cost, you could put, you know, what is commonly referred to as a sinking fund. You could make a payment every year to it so you know that, you know, 10 years out, 12 years out, 13 years out, you're gonna replace it, just like you do with a roof.
But funded by MAU, not included in the bond?
Right, right.
Well, we would have to, that's, I think this is the discussion we have to take. I mean, more and more places, institutions now that are putting up new buildings are incorporating the maintenance of those buildings and replacement of those buildings in the initial cost. So the, when they throw the bond issue, they'll take care of us. I would, it would have a significant impact on our budget if we tried to include the maintenance if we went through that, you know. I worry about that. That's one of the things that we should discuss.
I do, but I'm not, and that, it needs to be discussed, but I'm not sure what megasum we would have to put in an initial bond, a replacement cost of like $700,000 and where that money then would sit for the 13 years until we needed it.
It wouldn't make sense for us to finance it because we'd be paying interest.
You'd be financing, yeah. That's an expensive.
Well, those are all things that I think that we have.
I mean, it would be a better option to, when it's time to replace it, you did a smaller bond to replace it through like the wrong bond bank rather than or do a certain one.
Yes, sorry.
What happens to the connecting baseball fields and stuff? I mean, we're moving things, gonna put a new track in, we're taking out the bleachers.
It does not affect the.
It won't affect any of that? We don't have to, are we looking at maybe having a turf for that too? Because.
Well, that has not been discussed at this point.
Okay, the only reason I'm asking is, we've had the storm of baseball team and stuff like that that's been wanting to use the fields. And I think we've had some, you might have had some talk about synthetic fields if we do that. We'd have more game stuff.
This is not a new topic.
So I'm trying to get an understanding for the rest of the call on this spreadsheet as I go left to right and I'm going down and I'm trying to understand. You gave me five categories of things here to look at. And then when I get to the first bottom, that Sub A total, it ain't much difference there. And then you tell me that one is only turf and the rest of them are all grass?
Right.
And then the replacement of the disposal.
And that's what it takes?
On that same cap.
Right, and I'm saying, this is what all of that costs? I mean, where's the field that we have in there right now?
If you go under, where you see initial field costs and you look at furnace and install the turf system, that's where the big difference is. And that, you know, you have a $900,000 swing there. And the cheapest being natural turf with native soils. If you're gonna spend all that money to do that, you might as well stay with what you have right now. So it's there as an option, but I don't think that that's a viable option. But it's all the other site work that it's like a uniform price in here. And it really comes down to making a decision of what you wanna put on, what the playing surface and how well of a drainage system you wanna put underneath it.
So what you're telling me, that if I wanted to do, if I was, this proposal is to say that wipe everything clean and decide to redo everything we got in each one of these scenarios, not what we have right now in terms of that situation is not one of these on here.
So, so that.
That's what I'm trying to understand, this cost that's associated out here. These five categories has to do with starting ground zero to redo everything and pick one of these versus the situation that we're in right now. Is that, does that make any sense?
I don't really understand the question.
I think, me and I think that like the one all the way on the, so right now, the field, the way it's set up is grass and it's, it's weedy, it's up and down, it's hill.
And that's natural soil.
That's all the way on the right. If they were to get rid of that grass and like re-sod it without changing anything and kind of level it, it's like $100,000. Then if they wanted to work on drainage because it's like got the holes in the puddling or whatever, that's gonna be an extra. So it just, or do you wanna sand cap it and drainage? So the first.
That's the question that I'm asking.
Or all grass. It's all, all you're doing is either fixing it or re-surfacing it with grass.
Right, and that's, and that's why I was asking that question. I wanna know where we are right now. And that seem to be that column, number five over here.
It would be re, that would be like just lay.
In terms of closest to what we are and if we need it, as we start to do some, this is what it's gonna cost for the field that we have right now, anytime we're gonna do some.
If we wanted to replace it and get the same situation?
Right, right. That's what I wanted to know what that was in terms of clarity along this line so that I can then start to look across and says, well, the advantage of turf versus something else out here. And how are we gonna pay?
And incrementally, as you work across the page, you're getting improved drainage in this scenario with the, with the first one there.
Drainage without removing the soil and replacing it is not gonna be as good as drainage without it. So it's, it's a better product as you're going right to left.
Correct.
Up until you get to synthetic turf, then that's the debate on whether you want synthetic or natural turf. But the first four columns from the right are definitely an improvement in the subsurface of the project. And then the last two columns is, that's where you gotta make a decision which way you wanna go.
I would like to hear from some of people about what you feel are the advantages of a, of an artificial turf field. I mean, it, just, you know, we've talked about a lot of advantages, but I'd like, maybe you could be more specific about why it's important that we seriously consider this.
So I'll take that one and then they can chime in as well, the coaches can. So for us, we're obviously pushing for synthetic turf because a big issue for us right now is playability. So you'll notice like on the surface we have right now after the first football game, okay, the whole right and left side of the soccer field is totally worn down. And then by the end of the season, the surface is not flat, there's potholes, there's, you know, we're missing grass. And then the issue of weather in Vermont. So a lot of soccer games, if we had lacrosse up there, okay, a lot of those games and football games as well are canceled a lot because of the lack of drainage and the puddling and the unsafe surface that the natural grass has. And then the other big thing from my end is just being equitable across sports because right now, our lacrosse team, our field hockey teams, okay, they play, they don't play in the stadium, well, our term, for lack of a better term, our stadium. They play across the street and they play, you know, on the, on the baseball and softball fields. So obviously, they would like to play under lights. So that's a big thing on my end. Coach Lloyd, you wanna take it for soccer?
I think in the Northeast, the weather, the climate, like ideally, as a coach, natural grass is what like everybody, the Premier League plays on natural grass, that's what you want. But where we're, where we are, turf is just a much more friendly option for us. It's a, it's a flat surface, it's a playable surface, you're not rolling ankles or like, you know, it's, it's a pretty, you know, you know what you're gonna get. And you're gonna get that no matter if you start in, you know, March and the snow is off the field or if you're going into November and, you know, it's a true surface. So I think around the state, you know, Manchester, Rutland, Burlington, like the state has started to like just use the turf option. I think that our maintenance crew does a tremendous job with what they have, but they're not, they're not groundskeepers. We don't have groundskeepers. We have maintenance, you know, people who mow the lawn and line the field. You know, the colleges that have these natural grass surfaces, they have full like groundskeeping crews that take care of them and full like irrigation systems and everything. So I think for us, like the usability is important for the turf field. And it just is, it's a consistent playing surface that we'll be able to, you know, we'll be able to practice on, we'll be able to play on. It's gonna free up that veterans' home field, which is in trouble in terms of just how much it gets used, practices and games. Because the football team, the boys soccer, the girls soccer team can practice on that field as well as play on that field. So I just think it's, you know, for Mount Anthony and where we're at in Bennington, I think it's a no-brainer, you know, usability-wise to pay the extra upfront to make it a turf field. And they've done so much, kind of, it's a different turf than it was 15, 20 years ago. It's like a natural grass turf. It's not made of tire, like, you know, ground up tires anymore. They've got like, they've got it down to almost the size. It's like a little sand base that comes out of, you know, clay. So I think it's different than what it used to be when you're thinking of the old like, you know, Astrodome or some, it's not that anymore. It's actually like you're playing on, like you're playing on a grass.
One of the concerns that one of the board members expressed very carefully was that, I guess in Williamstown, I was mentioned that they've had gone through quite a debate about the environmental impacts of that. Is that a, is that something that this committee, when they do?
There is, you are, that's listed in the report as a possible cost. It's a reference to be about runoff because it's now a permanent service, so.
And I think the big thing in Williamstown, I mean, I wasn't a part of that mix, but Mount Graylock wanted the turf. They have a gorgeous turf field at Williams College. So I think part of the thing was like, well, we, they use that turf a lot, you know, for themselves, you know, and MCLA is right there. So they have two turf options. Do they need to have? Do they need to have one at the, at the school as well? So I think that was some of it, you know, it may have been a drainage thing, but they have within 10, 15 minutes like turf that they, the two.
You will have to address Storm one.
Right. Yeah. In terms of the, of the field itself, is there a high, is there a lot of maintenance to, to these artificial?
To the field itself, I don't think, once it's in, I don't think there's much maintenance that goes with it. But, you know, if we're looking at natural surfaces, you know, I can come up with, two years ago, we hosted a playoff game, kids been working, you know, all year long to host and they're, you know, the aspiration of winning a state championship. Poured the night before and our maintenance staff did the best they possibly could, but they were left to spread kitty litter on the goal mouth. So the traction was barely anything for be, to be able to get traction. I mean, it's hard to look a kid in the eye and say like, we're doing the best we can for you when we're gonna provide that kind of surface for kids to play on. And when we practice at a different location than where we play, the dimensions of the field are different, you know, so we're saying like, let's practice here and get used to the system that we're gonna go ahead and play. But then we go ahead and try to extrapolate that onto a different sized field up in Spinelli, sometimes it's not the same thing. So it's, we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot. And so we can put a Band-Aid on this and say that, you know, a natural turf field is the way to go, but that still doesn't allow us to play. We're still gonna have the same usage issues that we do unless we have a synthetic field. Then we can say to our kids, we're gonna practice where we're gonna play, we're gonna share that equitably through all the different sports, whether it's gonna be lacrosse, field hockey and how much use can we get? And I would think that it'd also be a revenue generator for places like the Storm to come in to play during the weekend and it'd be no damage to the field itself. When they come and play on a natural surface, that thing gets chewed up very, very quickly. And to me, that's as a coach, you know, whether it's gonna be football or soccer, I'm sure Chad is saying like soccer guys use it all the time. We're saying the football guys are using it and so it's a matter of who gets to it first. When it should be something that's gonna be the best possible thing we can offer to our kids so they can compete because they put in all this time. For, for us to look at those kids and say, you know what, we're not, we're gonna give you something subpar, I don't feel like that's, that's what they deserve.
And to piggyback off.
What, what are the dimension issues you?
So a normal soccer field is 120 by 80, okay, 120 long by 80 wide, okay. The Spinelli currently, I think is the best wide, maybe 65 to 4 yards across. So when you're asking kids to play in a certain system of play and you're asking them to take advantage of the width of a soccer field, the way that it's been lined out and that's the way the game's been, been come up with, and then you're saying that we're gonna eliminate 15 yards, it's really not the same thing, you're not playing the same thing. It's like playing in a bowling alley as opposed to a soccer pitch. And that makes a big difference for how we're gonna be able to coach and where our kids are gonna be able to do.
And to piggyback off.
What, what do schools have for?
So the problem with our, the fields are bigger, the, the bleachers inside of the track, like on that visitor's side, that hinders the width. Like so, and if you would get rid of the bleachers and Paul and I had talked about, like, we're like, get rid of the crown of the field, it goes like that and then the drainage is right next to the bleachers. So the whole thing would have to be, you know, redone. So the, the most fields that we play on are inside of the tracks. Like you go to Rutland, there's no bleacher, the bleachers are outside of the track.
It's the only issue in the state on every seat.
Okay. Let me, let me move this along a bit. I think that, I think we, as we approach this, we don't, we don't have the information that we need to be able, obviously to make a decision tonight. There's a lot that has to be done. I think what we should do is to make a recommendation here, the board, that a committee will be formed to investigate the feasibility of redoing the fields, whether they be redone in grass or whether they be done on artificial turf. We can then decide tonight who should be on that committee and, or not necessarily the names, but the representatives, how many coaches, how many board members, maybe people from the community and time, and try to get, when we do that, maybe we can sort of initially set a time when that committee would be formed and then that committee can, can move on from there. I don't want to try to do too much tonight. But first of all, I think that we need, if, if everybody has agreed that we don't have enough information and there just are too many questions that are, that need to be explored to be able to vote this evening on a bond issue that would be presented to the voters in March. I just don't think we have enough. And therefore, do, does this board agree that we should, that a committee should be formed to investigate the options that are available to us in pursuing redoing the field? I don't want to say necessarily right at the beginning that we're gonna do an artificial field, but whatever it would be.
What would be the, and what would be the outcome of the committee?
The committee would then make a recommendation to the board to, to move forward on this.
So what I was gonna say, I was gonna, Amy.
Go ahead.
We would have to give the committee some specific charges in terms of what it is that we want from the committee that, that we're sending out here. I mean, with the goal in mind that, that the objective is to say that we want to, to look at the feasibility of acquiring and, and putting, installing a turf field and all of the things that you got here associated with some costs, but there are some other things that needed to happen out here that, there's public information format that has to be in place to keep the public informed about what it is that we're trying to do because we're asking public for money out here. All of those things that we list, started to talk about in terms of the advantages of going to a turf field, that need to be a concrete piece of information listed out so that we can, that they, that the public can see all of the reasons that we're saying we need to go that route to be able to do that. So those are some things that need to be part of that.
I think the direction is clear. You paid to have this engineering study done. This committee would be to explore the options as outlined.
Right.
And come back with a recommendation and to use whatever means necessarily. If they want to bring in turf experts, they want to bring in turf installers to present to that committee that then they present their findings up to the board. So you did the engineering study.
Yeah.
The charge would be to come back and make the recommendation.
What I'd, what I'd like to do this evening, if we could, is to get an idea of what we feel is the most productive committee that we can, we can form. I would think if we just start off, we, we would certainly want board members on it. We would want members of the community. Does that make sense to people? Have, you know.
Yes.
Community members. We would have coaches. Who else would, what?
You need to put, you know.
Paul.
Paul should be there and.
Administration.
I could appoint somebody to be there.
Administration, would that be a good, a good one? Okay. So if we, if we have, were there anybody, we have board members, we have community members, we have coaches or, let's see, maybe we want to broaden that again, coaches and we have administration. Does that make sense?
Well, you could ask the athletic director to appoint who the coaches be.
Right.
You could appoint the board members.
You want to have a student if you could.
No.
A student if you could.
That's a great idea.
A player.
A student athlete.
Student athlete or somebody from that level.
Sure. Okay, we'll, we'll put in a student then. Anybody else have, have an idea? Okay, let's just get a, let's get an idea of, idea of numbers. If we start off with board members, I'd like to keep it, I'd like to keep the committee relatively small rather than big because it's just very hard to get people together, particularly if we're gonna be working towards some sort of a deadline. And let's say that we have three board members, board, we can decide later who they are.
Three seems like a lot.
Three's a lot.
Two, two.
Two, two. All right, good. I'm just looking for ideas.
I know, you have a lot of knowledge on the, on the board.
Well, yeah, and any meeting will be a public meeting so people can go, all right, community members, how many there? Two, three, two?
Well, my community members are probably gonna be my coaches and parents.
Well, that would be parents that would be interested, or maybe there are people that would like to see an artificial field so they can have activities on it. I don't know. Two? Let's put down two just to start with. Coaches?
I would do two across the board.
Yeah.
Okay, we do two across the board. We want two administrators and how about just one, one student?
One student's fine.
Young student. So what we've got are board members, community members, coaches, coaches, administration and one student member. All right, I can, I can work on those. Community members, why don't, why don't, why don't I work with the board members to publish, maybe we should, I'm thinking as I'm talking as I'm thinking, maybe we should send out a notice to the public that we're interested in community members who would like to serve on this community and then we can.
We can put it on our website.
We can put it on our website.
It's being broadcast right now, so anybody from the public wishes to serve in this committee, they should contact the superintendent's office and we'll relay the name.
Okay, the administration, you can take care of that. Maybe.
We'll ask the principal to give us a student.
Yeah, principal and Ashley and.
We'll ask the athletic director to give us two coaches.
Yeah.
Or herself and a coach.
Yeah, and you're gonna give us, give us two of those and I'll work on those. Now let's just think about a timeline as we go through this thing. Hopefully we can get this, this committee done by, at least formed by the middle of February, second week of February, second week of February, I just put these dates.
Maybe sooner.
Yeah. Get that done. This committee then will be charged, will be, will make up a, a list of things that they are going to be responsible for.
We could do, I could do a draft of that.
Yeah, we can, we can, I think administration can help with that, a draft of those things down. And, you know, as the committee members can all contribute to that. Now, if, and I don't know what kind of a realistic timetable do we have, but I think that those people that want to be on this committee would like to have some indication as to how quickly we can move ahead with this thing and.
I think they should do an initial report by the April board meeting.
February, March, April, April.
Not saying their work will be done, but they should be able to give an initial report by the April meeting.
Okay, April, does anybody come to join in if, if, you know.
No, that's great, that's funny from our end.
We have the engineering study already. Once we have who the board members are, we'll make sure they all get a copy of the engineering study. We'll arrange for MSK to come to that meeting, give a presentation and we'll also brainstorm on who else, you know, it may be turf vendors that we want to hear from.
Right.
Maybe we want to hear from other schools that have turf, you know, these are just, whatever the coaches suggest and who else we may want to present information on some of the questions that you already had tonight about an artificial surface, playing surface. I think there was some really good points made particularly about where we are from a environment and temperature point of view that, you know, there was really valid argument about, you know, natural turf is certainly what we all would love to play on, but what's the impact of use and location. And one thing that was, so many of those artificial, I mean, those natural turf fields are also heated. Yeah.
When did the drainage problems begin?
They always.
They were there when I was in.
They've always been there. Let me, let me just.
Paul, could, could part of that be solved if we raised the elevation of the field, say three inches or four inches and put underlying drainage, drain tiles in there?
I mean, that's what some of those options are that are laid out.
Yeah. Let's, let me just go over this so that be sure that we all understand. What we're going to do, we're gonna form a committee. The committee will be composed of two board members, two members of the community, two coaches.
Members of community could be a parent.
Could, could be members of the community as a broad term, two administrators that would be appointed by central office and one student that would be appointed with Ashley and the principal, and the principal student to join that. That, that committee hopefully would be able, those members would be identified by the middle of February, by the middle of February. That committee will meet and report to the board on the April meeting of the board, which would be the third Wednesday in April. And what that will do is that committee will be, once they're formed, they will meet, they will meet during March and the first part of April, the end of February to be very specific about what their duties are. Does that, does that make sense to me?
I'm gonna send you a, we will draft a charge for the committee and I will get that.
Okay. That, that would be good now.
So I was gonna say, most of the times with committees, it has to be made perfectly clear that that's a, the committee is a recommendation to the full board, the option of doing something and not that it's gonna happen exactly like you think it's gonna happen just because you were part of a committee. I want to make sure that that's perfectly clear because we run into that situation and have it be horrible out here. This is a committee to act and go and get the draft, the new work and so forth and come back to make a recommendation to the board and, and convince the board that they need to do certain things, do it a certain way and get approval for that.
Okay, I, you know, I certainly agree with that. I think we want to be sure. Let me just think, are there, are there other issues concerning this that we've, we've overlooked?
Tim.
Yeah.
Listening to Mike and the other gentleman there, are we gonna have to hire groundskeepers now instead of maintenance people that we have?
Well, it's, no, I don't.
I'm just asking.
And it's in the proposal on the turf, there's some specialized equipment.
It's more like a, it's not a, it wouldn't be mowed, it would be like.
No, I, I get, I just want to make sure.
Some zamboni grass.
And it's classes and trainings for, for that new, new equipment as well.
For the maintenance people.
Yeah. One of the, one of, obviously one of the big decisions to make is whether we are going to, and I'm not saying what we should do, is to go ahead with artificial turf or try some of these other four things that are. And, and we've got to take a look at, at, you know, we always have to take a look at costs. We have to be realistic and Renee's gonna have to help us with this as to what the bond issue would require of us, we, and how long a period we want to put them on. I, I see this, yes.
Yeah, so this, just so you know, that this document is just a kind of a snapshot as to the loans that we have that are gonna be cycling off over the next several years. So the timing right now is actually potentially ideal because if you notice, in fiscal year 2021, 22, you know, we have liabilities that we're gonna have included in our budgets of $638,000. The following year, the biggest loan that we have is gonna be paid off, so that drops to $281,000. So that would be the time that, you know, to cycle on a new loan would really have the most minimal impact to our, our budget.
But as we, as we mentioned, Paul also has another study that's gonna be going on around the high school itself. It could impact what else needs to be bonded.
I want to be, I want to be clear in exactly what we will be asking the, the budget for. We are not, at least I certainly don't feel that we should incorporate this construction project in terms of the MAU operating budget. It, it would, it would be disastrous to our, to our budget to be able to do that. We wouldn't be able to do many of the things that we should do. And the only way that you can still get the money to be able to do this would be through a, through a bond, which would have to be approved by the voters. Does everybody agree with that? I mean, we don't want to incorporate it in our regular operating budget.
Right. Yes.
If you want to underwrite a whole thing to fill out.
You've got the money. That's one of your houses.
Maybe we should consider forming a 501(c) corporation, asking for donations around the world.
That may come, that, that's something that will be in the charge of this committee that could make back, come back with that recommendation.
One of the things that's going to.
We can't do it.
No.
Someone else has to.
But one of the things that is going to make this possible, if in fact we move forward on this, is community support because in order to make it happen, it's gonna have to, if there's a bond issue, it's gonna have, the public's gonna have to, have to vote on it. And if we can incorporate or entice, whatever the word is, members, some members of the community, certainly these two individuals, to be active members, to, you know, go to Rotary, go to this, go to that and, and be a spokesman for the project.
Possible you don't need to bond the entire cost.
I see that happening, just what you're saying, after the recommendation by the board, if it decides that, hey, the best thing for the school long-term is an artificial turf, well then that's when the solicitation, you know, you go out and you, you check on.
I'm just thinking ahead. We don't know what the town taxes are gonna be or what the state is gonna do this year, next year, the year after, and as a contingency, maybe that, that would finance.
I think it, I think it will happen like after the, after the.
Yeah. Does anybody else like to add anything to this that they, have we left things out?
Mr. Gordon, you didn't get to.
I didn't. There's not too much I can add.
Thanks.
I guess the only thing I'd like to add is that it really would become a community field if it was a turf field, you know, you guys mentioned the Storm. Um, you know, you guys mentioned the Storm as a possible revenue source, but several communities do, uh, some, some are tournaments, youth soccer, youth lacrosse, um, getting the youth football program up there. Um, those are possible ways to pay off the, the replacement cost with, uh, different fees and just making it really a center focal point for our community. So I think it's a good part for the committee to look at.
Over the years, we've had numbers, a great, good number of, of different groups, institutions coming and wanting to use the field. And we've always been very hesitant about doing it because we want to be sure that the field stays in its good shape for, for our things.
We turn people down all the time.
Yeah, we turn people down all, all the time. It comes in all the, this gentleman over here, I don't think I know, you know, you wish you would like to say something.
I'm just a private citizen here, very concerned about athletics and the playing brick pace and all, by the way.
Okay, very good. Well, glad to have you here. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I, Amy was good pointing out that we haven't heard from all of you.
Who maintained alumni field when it existed?
If there aren't, we have one more piece of business. So, are there any more comments? Any more comments that anybody would, or are there any comments that anybody would like to make concerning what we've accomplished this evening? If not, yes, yes.
Do we need a motion on forming that committee and, uh, by the board?
Sure, I think it would be a good thing, Richard, to put it in. That's a good idea. Go ahead, make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. And Leon, seconding. All those in favor, basically the motion is that we form a committee made up of two members, two board members, two members of the community, two members, two co, members of the, of the coaching staff, two members of the administration and one, uh, student. Uh, that committee, I think that's enough. We'll just have that and we can work with the rest of it. That's the motion. Do we have, we had a second, Leon?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose to abstentions? Very good. The next thing we have to do is get a board motion to warn our, uh, our budget.
Annual meeting.
Annual meeting, I knew what I was saying, annual meeting. So we have a motion for that?
Yes, so it's a move, and the date for that is?
Second.
Well, the floor meeting will be.
The floor meeting, that, we're just, we're just.
Monday, the second, or sorry, yeah, Monday the second, at the Bennington Firehouse at 6:15. And then the polls will be open in all the towns from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on March 3rd.
But we're, we're just, what we're voting on is the, is the whole.
Budget and board members.
Okay, so, did you, did you?
I did.
Okay, we have a second. He's second. Second, okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Should we state what the budget is if we're going to vote that?
No, I think, no, we can.
We did, we did it the last meeting.
We had, we approved the budget at our last meeting and that's incorporated in this. But there are a lot of other things in there. We've got, you know, moderators fees, this fees, that fees. Okay, we, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose to abstentions. Okay, is there any other?
It is coming over your signatures now.
A motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
Please don't leave until you sign the warning.
You got to sign what's coming around.
All, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.